Okay, folks, we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you, everyone, for joining us this evening. This is a special meeting to discuss nearby neighbors and some concerns that may have been raised about operations and things occurring in and around Mid-City Garage, one of our neighborhood businesses. So the way these special meetings normally go and kind of the role of the MVA in this situation is to bring everyone to the table to have a good discussion and hopefully move toward a good neighbor agreement so that all parties involved can come together and work together to make sure that everyone's being a good neighbor. We'll do kind of an open floor this evening. The only thing that we do ask is if you want to use the hand raise feature, please do that. I'll see if I can, I can call on you to, to let you speak. Otherwise, you know, the floor will be pretty much open. But we do ask that you keep your microphones muted when you're not actively speaking, so there's no background noise or feedback. And please that everyone remain respectful, no speaking over each other or interrupting folks. We want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak. So we'll kind of get started here. First and foremost, I know we have at least one representative from Mid-City Garage joining us. Could, hi Taylor. So Taylor, now Taylor, are you the only representative here this evening? Or are there others joining us as well?
We will have one more. He's running a little bit late. He just had to scoot on by, but he'll be joining us here shortly. We can probably just go ahead and get started though.
Perfect, no problem at all. Thank you, we appreciate you being here. And so Taylor, kind of as we move through the meeting and folks have questions, they can address them to you and then obviously you can, you can answer or ask questions if you need more information. Just, you know, whatever makes the most sense. What I will do is I will share just some basic information that we've received so far from neighbors as kind of a baseline. And then, of course, neighbors who are here, I would like for them to, to please expand upon that, share any information we may not have, or let us know about other issues that maybe have arisen more recently. Taylor, if I could ask you quickly, what is your either position at Mid-City or your relationship to the group?
So I am one of the regional managers for the company. Mid-City has been under a few different managers and I'm just recently stepping back into it. I started off as a bartender with them, just kind of training the staff. We had some turnover and then we lost the actual management there. So I'm just kind of stepping in and trying to get it better organized.
Okay, great. So do you work onsite at Mid-City or are you kind of offsite most of the time?
Offsite most of the time. I check in from time to time. I'm usually there at least once or twice a day. If I can be, depending on what store I'm like actually stationed at, but I try to, try to be there as much as possible.
Okay, fantastic, thank you. One of the things we will likely also hope to work toward, and this will probably be part of any good neighbor agreement we are able to draft, is a way, the best way that neighbors can contact Mid-City if there are concerns. Obviously, we have some neighbors who have gone over to Mid-City and maybe spoken with a manager on staff. But of course, that's not always the best option. Managers might be busy, there could be turnover. And so we want to make sure that neighbors do have the, the correct contact information to let Mid-City know if there's problems going forward. So that's one thing we'll ask as well. So just to share with everyone some of the information that we've heard from neighbors so far. Pretty much similar complaints, the number one complaint from everyone has been extremely loud music played late into the evening, even beyond closing. So I believe that Mid-City typically closes at midnight and there have been concerns where the music is going into 1:00 AM, sometimes as late as 2:00. And that it's just extremely loud to the point that neighbors have all of their doors and windows closed and yet they're still, you know, rattling in their homes and they can still hear it late at night. So that's, that's the big concern that everyone has shared. Other neighbors unfortunately have had experiences with patrons coming into their yards to urinate and defecate, I'm sorry, urinate and vomit, sitting on their, their stairs and their retaining walls, talking very loudly into the, the late hours of night, gathering around vehicles in the street, playing music for long periods of time. Again, talking very loudly, kind of in the middle of the street and therefore, you know, affecting the neighbors who live nearby. So those are the general concerns that we've heard from folks. What I'd like to do is open the floor, neighbors who do live nearby, if anybody would like to, to share additional information or let us know about specific experiences you've had, I can open the floor now for that.
Yeah, hi. My name is Matt Myers. I live directly next door, actually right behind. Let's see, I'm on Mid-Hop, so I'm just right next to the, to the building. So hello, everybody. Nice to meet you. I have actually spoken to several managers on, on different occasions. Thought that was really my only outlet because I had spoken to different people at corporate, talking to the owners of the building. So there was kind of a chain of command that was communicated to me and I tried to follow that. You know, I felt very, very much early on, kind of, I'm providing a little bit of context as a, as a very close neighbor to, to the building. You know, early on, felt me and, and my family had been extremely accommodating to, to this whole process. We moved in, in early 2017. It was not this business at that time, so there was a transition that occurred. Early on, there was, you know, accommodated people coming into my yard to make electrical connections. They cut down an enormous tree that was in, you know, close to our backyard to install the new electrical pole. You know, accommodated all of those things. Early on, this whole process and what the business was going to be was never really communicated at all. And then during construction, there was a lot of activity. There was broken glass that was, that was done, they were replacing windows. Debris was, was in my yard and nothing was, was ever cleaned up. I still have debris in my yard from, from roof paint that, that was done. And as you mentioned, thank you Jess for, for some of the comments initially. I'm right next door. I've had people walk into my, my backyard and urinate, right where we are. I have pictures and videos of, of, of all of this. There's been vomit all, you know, on, on my front, you know, front yard. There's been leaking gas lines and people don't know that, but I had to call the, the city, you know, Ohio Gas to come and close the gas line. Gas was coming into our house and now people are smoking directly next to that gas line. That's directly, that's about eight feet from our front door. Smoke comes into our house, I can smell smoke all through our house, right? And you mentioned the music, it vibrates. So those, just, just to provide a picture of somebody that's really close to this, this, this business, these are, these are things that are happening. You mentioned the music. There's a lot of music that's going on. It was just very loud very recently for, 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 I don't know why. But, um, so there's, there's, there's some things that are definitely concerning. I think, you know, fundamentally though, when this project was, was announced and discussed, I attended along with my family and many other neighbors, the Marion Village Association meeting about this. The, the image that was presented and how this was discussed was about a, a, and pictures were presented. There was a small patio similar to what is there now, but there was significant greenery and landscaping all around the property. That's not what we have now. There's, there's open areas, there's, there's debris. I can share pictures if you want me to share my screen. I have pictures of just trash cans sitting out, there is wood debris for the last six months. There's picnic tables everywhere, fencing all over the place. There's cornhole games that are going on. I view this as a party, a party location right next to my house. That's not what was presented, right? So that's my, my background and kind of what I'm coming into this, this meeting about. I very much want to find a solution to this because I want a good business at this location. I was entirely positive about having a business at, a new business at this location. This is, what we have now is not what was presented. So I really, I really am thankful for everyone to be here today and talk through how we can, how we can address some of these issues. I don't think it's a big deal. I think these are simple solutions that can be resolved or, or issues that can be resolved. We just want good neighbors for everybody. I live right next door, I need to sleep at night. Everybody else has these same issues. It, it, it doesn't need to be the situation that it is right now. And I conclude.
Thank you, Matt. Okay, anyone else, neighbors, someone who's lives nearby? John, please go ahead.
Hi. Yeah, my name's Jonathan Wally. I live on one house west of Matt and have lived in that house since 2006. And I've had numerous conversations with Matt over the fence about this. It's clear that he and his family have sort of taken the brunt of the problems, but I would, I would echo everything that he's said, both the, both the good and the bad. You know, the bad being is that there has been a significant amount of disruptive activity by patrons. I'm not convinced that some of that disruptive activity isn't by staff. You know, we've had people taking smoke breaks and having loud phone conversations while sitting on our retaining wall, you know, who, who work at the restaurant and who have, have breaks there. And, and we've experienced the same noise problem that Matt has, has said. And just to give it an example, about a half an hour ago, I was in my, in my house, all the doors and windows are closed, air conditioning is going, and I can hear the music from the establishment. Really what I can just hear is the kind of the thrumming of the outdoor speakers, the bass of those. And that's been a consistent issue since, since the, the business opened. But also, I mean, I agree, I'm grateful for people being here and, and willing to come and have this discussion and give us the opportunity to air these concerns. But I agree with Matt, I think that it's, I think the solutions are probably fairly simple, common sense solutions. But, and I would also echo, you know, what Matt said is, is that, you know, architectural drawings and plans were presented that are not consistent with the appearance of the property now. And I'm, I'm aware that those, you know, that the, that the business is in no way bound by, by those. That was an architect's rendering. And it may have been that the architect made that rendering before Mid-City even owned the property, when the property was, was for sale. But, you know, it's, it does strike one in both appearance and activity and sound around the bar and restaurant as kind of a party place. And, you know, people playing cornhole games in a spot that is literally 10, maybe 15 feet from Matt's front door, smoking there, you know, and, and there is debris. But I mean, I, I think that, you know, I, I don't, you know, the, the appearance is not, the appearance is not the major issue, but I think it's maybe bound up with the kind of the overall impression that, that the business is giving right now, which is, you know, which is of, you know, a, a place for people to kind of gather outdoors, including immediately outside neighbors' windows and, you know, make a significant amount of noise. And so that's, that's my main concern. But I, but again, I want to thank everyone for being here and for Jess, especially for organizing this. And I'm, I'm speaking for myself from here in good faith to, you know, discuss this and, and you come to some positive resolutions for the whole neighborhood, including the business.
I'm sorry I joined late, guys. My name is Frankie, I'm the operations manager for the space. So most of our previous conversations we've had have been with the landlord, Dave Cote. I imagine that the architectural renderings especially were the ones that he gave to the city. As far as communication with the neighborhood, myself and Taylor are always, just a little communication will go a long way. We really, we, all of our communication goes through them. Dave Cote and his girlfriend, I'm not sure what her name is. So hearing that if you guys would prefer us not to be on that side, that's absolutely fine. Dave just told us the entire property was available to use for outside space. So I mean, I think that's an easy solve for us. And as far as the music goes, we didn't really have a good set time that we were told to shut off music, so we reached out to see what noise ordinance in the neighborhood was. If the neighborhood would like a earlier time, not a problem for us either. We just kind of need some, I'd like to be in more contact with you guys so we have better feedback. And that's about it, like.
That is definitely ideal. So Frankie, thank you for joining as well. I don't know if you were here when I mentioned. So ideally, hopefully, we will be able to, to bring this group together to put together just a quick, good neighbor agreement between neighbors and Mid-City that just talks about these things, right? Like concerns neighbors have and, and maybe what Mid-City can or is willing to do. And that would include contact information, how neighbors can get ahold of you. And then, of course, you can always reach out to the Marion Village Association as well if, you know, you want us to communicate something to folks. But in general, before I, what I'll do is Taylor and Frankie, if you guys want to address anything else specifically, I know that patrons and kind of issues with patrons has come up. And of course, that's always a difficult issue because, you know, you're obviously not in control of the patrons. I can tell you that we've had some other establishments here in the neighborhood that, that do have kind of a, a bar atmosphere right inside a residential area who have dealt with this before and did, did have to work overtime with their regulars, with their patrons to try to, you know, structure the environment better to be good for, for the surrounding area. So I know that's not a quick fix necessarily, but there, there has definitely been success in other areas. So it is possible to work toward that, which is, is helpful. Is there anyone else that wants to share any concerns that maybe we haven't touched on before we kind of give Taylor and Frankie an opportunity to, to talk about some things that maybe could be done and, and some things that could change?
The one thing I will say is, Matt, I apologize to you, like, because we, when we took that space over, like, your backyard, literally, it butts up against a bar. That was always a bar concept and we probably would have never gone in there had we known from Dave whether this was like a huge concern. Because we, we told him I was, that this is a bar, is this an issue? And I really like, I don't know how we can solve just sound on your side of the yard, honestly. That's like a big one, I know that was a big issue. Outside speakers, we can probably shut those off at 8 o'clock. I don't see any reason we can't.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And maybe we can just kind of work on trying to find a, a solution that I, I think the outdoor speakers just, being outdoor speakers, it's, uh, that is, that is one of the, one of the main, main problems. So maybe, maybe there's a volume issue as well and, and timing and things like that. Is, is Dave on the line? Is, do we have the owner representation here or anybody from ownership?
Actually, a quick question about, about Dave, since it's Frankie. Right? Okay. Since you mentioned him, is he, does he have involvement in the business at all? Or, okay. I mean, so he's, he, he simply owns the property?
Yep.
Yeah, so he's the landlord, okay. And... So it, I mean, I might, I might have misheard you, but if, if we were to contact him with some, you know, if there was a moment in time in the future where we wanted to, I mean, should he even be in the mix?
I mean, unless, you know, we're happy to, like, probably move on. If like, that's the thing is, it's a hard conversation because we've had our own issues with the landlord there. Basically just, you know, informational issues for the most part, like, we're happy in the future just not to have Mid-City there. Like, that's like a thing that we just never really realized how, like, what the situation would be, honestly.
Okay, I appreciate.
We tried to keep it Mid-City, like, because we knew it was a historic part of the neighborhood. That's the only reason we named the place that.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I appreciate that information. I mean, it, it doesn't surprise me, but I appreciate that. And it, because he doesn't appear to be on the call.
Yeah, it, it is, um, thank you for, for sharing that. It's, it's, uh, yeah, that's, that's unusual. I mean, he, he lives in the neighborhood.
Lives on Mid-Hop.
Yeah. Yeah, it's very unfortunate. Okay, so I, I don't know. I, Jess, any other procedural, I guess, questions from any other neighbors or things like that?
So the best things for us to do is kind of document these bullet points, these items that we really want to include in a good neighbor agreement. Of course, I have here the outdoor speaker. So it sounds like Mid-City is amenable to basically discontinuing outdoor speaker usage at 8:00 PM. Is that right Frankie? Would that be every night on weekends as well?
I don't see, I mean, that's, I, I personally, I'm not like, I'm not the owner of the business either. I, I have to speak with him about all these things, but I'm happy to. That's what I'm going to bring up to him.
Okay. Fantastic. So let's see here. And then, of course, you know, again, the, the patron issue is something that, um, I don't think any of us have the answer necessarily as to how to solve that. But if you could also discuss that with the owner and, and the fact that.
We can stop all cornhole over there, but I promise you, I gotta say this, and this is just from, we run multiple bars. When somebody leaves any one of our restaurants or bars, we can do our best to police the area that is our space. But if somebody walks out onto that sidewalk and is loud, I can't police them. The police will tell you the exact same thing.
Yeah, yeah. And, and Frank, sorry, just, I don't, I don't want to limit this to, to patrons. Over the past two years, I've gone over.
Our staff is easy to handle, we will rectify that immediately, yes.
I appreciate that. But as you mentioned earlier in the call, there's significant, I don't want to say significant, there's turnover that's occurring. I've talked to five managers about employees taking smoke breaks exactly where they are, constantly talking loud, this conversation. I've had it four or five times with different managers. So that's, that's part of it as, as well. So it's not just, yeah.
I'd like to jump in here. As somebody who tries to be onsite as much as possible, I can absolutely speak with the staff. Again, like you said, there's been quite a bit of turnover. We're hoping to keep this round of staff and, you know, build them into, you know, what we're talking about here is just good neighbors. So I think if we just discuss this and, and try to enforce it repeatedly, then it will be fine. And we can move forward with this. I will say, what would be a good place for staff to take their phone calls to their smoke breaks? I usually try to direct them to the alleyway behind the business. So we have another neighbor immediately on Jaeger, who actually works for, that works for us now. So we usually try to direct them to that alley so it's as quiet as possible for everyone else. But if there's another place that you would prefer, we can, you know, talk to them about that.
It, it's a, it's a very large corner lot. So, I mean, there's, there's lots of opportunities.
And we do have no smoking signs posted on our property and specifically near your space because we've had this discussion before. But again, we can, you know, just push the staff to, you know, talk to the guests about it.
I, I put those up and they've been cut down and there's some that are up there now as well. Yeah, that, that would be great.
Wonderful. So what I think I'd like to do, and of course, if there's anyone else that has anything they'd like to share or questions, I'll certainly give you an opportunity to do so before we end. But I think Taylor and Frankie, what I'd like to do is obviously, I know you'll want to share this information with the owner, of course, of the business. So if next steps could essentially be to kind of discuss with the owner, you know, these concerns and determine what the owner is willing to do, what kind of changes can be made. And then, of course, ideally, we'd like to have a phone number and maybe an email address that we could share with neighbors publicly, who they should be reaching out to in these situations. Because I, I think probably going over and talking to a manager on staff may not be the best route since, again, there's a turnover concern or things are busy. It would just probably be better if there was a point of contact that could.
Taylor, what is it? Service at Mid-City Garage?
Yeah, and if there's a, I can fill that out for whoever needs it. And I can give you my personal work email as well.
Do not give your personal email that they can email the store.
Another question that I, that I'd like to ask and it is, is regarding the, the seating outdoors. So, you know, never in the, again, as Jonathan stated, the, the pictures that we were presented, there was a, a small patio, right? Now there's, I don't know, two or three, I don't want to exaggerate, two or three or four picnic table.
Four tables outside, yeah.
Congregate outside. I feel that it, it really encourages the, that, that atmosphere of, of, of a party location. You know, take, take my words as are you want, but that's how it, it feels. And that was never part of it. Do you, and there's, there's some fencing around it that honestly is not, not attractive to, to the neighborhood as well. Is the intention to keep that? Because I, I think that was type of a, of a COVID situation where it was expanded to allow outdoor seating. Now, I, I feel like that was a temporary thing, but you tend to keep that?
The fencing, no. The seating, yes, because we applied for it. But like, me, I can get rid of that also as well, if you would like. That's something that I just have to talk to the owner about. There's, there's a situation, you know, that like, it's a, it's a faced situation on both sides. We are trying to survive as a business there. I mean, if we could have Dave on this call right now and say peace to Mid-Hop and Jaeger, we'd be happy to leave.
Oh, I think we have, yeah, okay. I don't want to interject, but we, we can have that conversation. You know, we want something that's, that's good there, a viable business that, you know, we don't want to vacant property, right? So, so we, we're not here to, to put somebody out of, out of business. It's just, there's a workable solution here.
I'm hoping that we can reach a middle ground is all I'm saying. It's, it can't be everything on, look, we, we went into a lease not expecting to like, you know, you know, hey, guys, you're not allowed to have any music outside, you can't have any seating out here now, you can't like. So it's like, we, I had a conversation with Dave Cote as well. Because like, there's a certain point is, we do pay rent at that entire space. It is not cheap.
Fully, yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah, and, and if, as a, as a neighbor, as a stakeholder in this whole thing, I would like to be included in that discussion with Dave. It's extremely disappointing, he is not on this call and I can't understand that. But I would like to be involved in that discussion and I will try to make an attempt to contact him to encourage this type of discussion. My request would be to not have picnic tables. That's full stop.
Hey, everybody, this is Tom O'Gara. I am also a neighbor, live a few blocks south. And I just wanted to say, I've had really wonderful experiences at Mid-City. My husband and I will come for dinner often on Sunday night, have a drink on the patio. And we really love having you in the neighborhood. So we don't, we don't experience what Matt and Jonathan have shared. So that was really my reason for joining the call today to kind of hear what is going on and on times when we haven't visited. I just wanted to speak up for a moment here to say, we hope that a middle ground can be found too. Because the experience that we have at Mid-City has been wonderful. And we have not participated in the, the party atmosphere, but we really enjoy having dinner and a, a drink on the patio. We love that you've brought a keel in and the barbecue food, which I think is delicious. And so we're big proponents of having a friendly neighbor, neighborhood business right in the heart of everything. So thanks for everybody's perspectives and I do hope that we can find a middle ground because I think it could be successful for everybody involved. And some of these things that the guys have called out do sound like fixes that, you know, are minor tweaks maybe to the business or, or hours or, or volume and can still, you know, survive in, in this neighborhood, which we love and wouldn't be the same with, wouldn't be the same without businesses like yours. Sorry for the dogs in the background.
I just, I'm David, hi. I'm, I'm a board member along with Jess and Eric. And also a few blocks south, so I'm definitely not as close to the whole situation. But I just wanted to sort of echo what Tom said. I've not been there really late or anything, so like, I, I don't know what goes on then. And like, I, I totally like, believe what, what the neighbors are saying. But yeah, I've just really enjoyed it earlier in the evening and have had a good non-party atmosphere time. And so like Tom, I hope that, you know, some of the things can get worked out because I do love having, having it nearby.
Okay, thank you, Tom Davis. Anyone else have any items they'd like to share, any questions before we, we end things tonight? I will stay in contact with Taylor and with Frankie certainly. And, you know, kind of determine what the owner is interested in, in looking at. And from there is, is what we will use to, to try to draft a good neighbor agreement, which again, when that draft is ready, we'll certainly share that at a monthly Marion Village meeting. And folks who have, are attending that meeting and who have been members for 21 days at that point would then potentially be asked to vote on, on that agreement. So we'll kind of prepare that over the course of the next month or so, just depending on how things go with the conversation with the owner. But just before we, we finish this evening, I just want to make sure everybody's had an opportunity, if anyone has anything else to share before we adjourn.
I will absolutely address all the concerns with the owner and I will ask him how he feels about the picnic tables for sure. Matt, I can't make that call on my own.
Of course, yep, thank you.
I just want to chime in and say, by no means did we ever intend for us to, this business to be a new. business to be a nuisance to the neighborhood. We wanted to bring something that was successful as, as well as fun for everyone involved. So just apologies for any, any problems that may have happened.
We appreciate both of you being here and being so responsive and, and, you know, answering questions and taking information.
I have a question. Sorry.
Also, go ahead.
Sorry, again, I can't do the raise hand in time, but so we have the, the email address, right? So, you know, no phone number, though. So how often is that email checked and returned?
It goes directly to Taylor.
I check that email every day.
Okay, so that really is the best way to communicate and not going to the managers who seem to be not passing along the message?
I mean, honestly, right now, Taylor and myself, mostly Taylor, we're trying to get our hands around a, essentially, we opened this place during COVID and it has been a struggle ever since. And we are trying to build on something now, build back better, essentially, I guess, if you would say. So yes, that email will be watched every single day. It will be responded to every single day. But I just don't feel comfortable giving out either one of our numbers so that 30 odd people can text us how upset they are in the middle of the night. I just don't want to do it.
And we will.
We will make sure that we, you know, we will be right on top of that email, though, no matter what, because we just, we gave, we gave it out for a reason. So it is our job now to respond to it.
I have a really quick, just detailed question. It's kind of idle curiosity, but before I ask it, I just want to thank Taylor and Frankie, you know, that, hearing the perspective of some of the, you know, some of the difficulties that the business has faced, which I, I mean, I think we all knew that COVID was an issue. But, you know, some of the other issues as well. And so I appreciate hearing that perspective. And yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, want this conversation to continue. And I'd, I'd echo what some of the other people said is, we certainly want to, you know, you know, a viable business. And everything that I've read online on Yelp and TripAdvisor, et cetera, says that, you know, it's a really good place. And so, I mean, we, we'd like to see that kind of place be, be successful. So, so, but I do really appreciate the perspective on, you know, the experience that the business has had at the property. So I'm grateful to you for that. Is there, is there only one Mid-City Garage or are there other locations?
No, we only, we, so Dave came to us because he wanted to rent the property. And literally, we had built that space out and we were ready to open it about a week before COVID even started. We only kept it Mid-City because Mike's family came in who owned Mid-City before.
Okay.
And like, we just wanted to keep it the same place in the neighborhood. It was in the neighborhood for what, 40 some odd years? Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that was, I was just curious.
Thank you, everyone, so much for sharing. Again, Taylor and Frankie, thank you for being here. And thank you for, you know, operating a business in our neighborhood. You know, we, we do love having neighborhood businesses. It's what makes our neighborhood what it is, the walkability, that atmosphere, you know, kind of the little, little cheers aspect with everyone knowing your name. We appreciate it and love it. So for you being willing to come to the table and just have this candid conversation, you know, with neighbors, we really do appreciate that. I cannot say that enough. So I will reach out by email. Please let me know again, once you've had an opportunity to speak with the owner and folks who are here. Likely the follow-up conversations will just be shared at monthly meetings. So please do plan to attend those so we can give you updates and and move forward.
Yeah, thank you, Jess, for organizing this and shepherding everybody together. So I appreciate that.
Absolutely. We are happy to help. You guys did the right thing. You reached out and you, you got connected to us. And so we were able to connect you with the business. And that is what we always like to see. So thank you so much. And we hope to continue the conversation.
Okay.
Have a great evening, everyone.
Yeah, thanks. Bye bye.